Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for July 1st of 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. It's great to see everybody here on a beautiful day in Federal Way. I'll be a little hot. So we'll start off with item number three, Proclamations and Presentations. First, the Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. And we've got Ben Miller here to help us through the presentation. A lot going on here, and I'll go through it pretty quickly. Okay? We had... Okay. On June 18th, we had the Connaught Park sign unveiling and groundbreaking. That immediately followed our Juneteenth celebration, the sixth time we've done that here. We raised the Juneteenth flag the day before Juneteenth. That's a state and national holiday. So we had there the descendants of John and Mary Connaught. John and Mary Connaught were pioneers in Washington State. John Connaught was actually the very first parliamentarian for the Washington State Legislature in 1889, settled in this area and the part of the tract of the land that he and his wife Mary settled in and the land that they owned was essentially right in that area, across the street from Silver Lake Elementary. It was Alderbrook Park. And so we had some descendants of several descendants of John and Mary Connaught. They are Maisha Burnett and Ganya Thomas, other family members. And also in the picture on the bottom left, Tirza Ida Hosa, who was a big proponent in making sure that we celebrated the Connaught family appropriately, as was many people in this community, including Diana Noble Goleford. And it was a really great event. It was covered, actually, this was on the front page of the local section of the Seattle Times. At the event, we said it was 100 years in the making, and that's very true. So yeah, that's the new sign. And there's also coincided with new playground equipment that's going to be at the Connaught Park. So it was great to see everybody there. And I would say that Tirza was actually Tirza's idea to make sure that we, you know, do this in a manner that would have great outreach with the community, and we really appreciate her advocacy. Okay.
Would you also please recognize Diana Goleford?
I did. Yeah. Thank you. Yes. Actually, Diana Noble Goleford, the former president of the Federal Way Historical Society, had recently brought that up and then also had championed this cause. And actually, John Connaught's picture had been in the history book of Federal Way that is, you know, part of our history. Okay, we had the immediately preceding that, we had the Juneteenth flag raising again on Wednesday, June 18th. And we had Pastor Joseph Bowman and his wife Pamela Bowman. Pam actually sang the National Anthem and the Black National Anthem. And then George Houston was actually one of the other speakers. A week later, we had the Puget Sound Energy Assessment Blitz, where they were going, a group of individuals spearheaded by PSE and Gillian Lowe is their representative, went to several local businesses and helped local businesses with energy-efficient lighting. Okay, we've got upcoming community events. We've got the Miles for MISO at the Community Center because every Fourth of July that we've been... Gosh, John, how many years now do you think we've had Miles for MISO?
I believe this is 16 or 17, sir.
Yes, yes. MISO is mesothelioma, and it is a disease that obviously was caused by asbestos. And there were, I think it was four widows of individuals who lived in our community, started this yearly race, Miles for MISO. It starts at the Community Center. It'll start at 9:00 AM. The crowd will start to gather at about 8:15, 8:30. And it's always great to see, and we usually have hundreds of people. And they've literally raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for mesothelioma research. Then later that day, we've got the Red, White &amp; Blues Festival on July 4th. That will be over at Celebration Park. That'll start at 4:00 PM. Fireworks right around 10:15. Is that right, John? 10:15?
That is correct. 10:15 on the dot.
All right. Okay. And there will be all kinds of booths and food and things for the kids to play. And that's right there in the playfields at Celebration Park. It's really one of the great community events. We estimate yearly, we get about 20,000 people who are part of that celebration or nearby. Then we've got the Summer Chalk Art Festival on July 12th, and that's a great event. Then next, and that's on July 12th, like I said. Then we've got upcoming community events, Movies at the Park, Disney's Moana 2 at Town Square Park on July 26th, free and open to the public. And then we've got the Drive-Thru Recycling Event at El Centro de la Raza, paper shredding only. Okay? Is that, and I believe that's my report. Okay, now, let's go. Now we're on to Council Committee and Regional Committee Reports. We've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Walsh.
Not much to report. However, I'm excited about the dedication of the renaming of the Connaught Park. Unfortunately, I had a business commitment and was not able to be there. But that park is just a block from my home and the park that my kids grew up playing in. And I always liked it when they played baseball down there because if they played baseball on our cul-de-sac, our front window was the home run. But anyway, but it's exciting that the Connaught Park is being dedicated to the Connaught family, historic thing, and it will also soon have a new playground as well. And that's exciting as well. We will not be having a committee meeting in July. We're gonna take a break from it, but we'll resume in August.
Councilmember Walsh, we are meeting in July, but not in August.
Oh, okay. Okay, in July, but not in August. That's right. That's right. I just got back from vacation eight days, and the brain still kind of rattled. So, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we've got Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We'll have our meeting July 7th at 5:00 PM here in the chambers. And we're debating if our August meeting, I think that's going to be potentially canceled or one of the other members. I'll be out of country for a little while. Thank you.
Okay, then we've got the Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our committee met last Tuesday, and we approved nine items total on the consent agenda today, item B through J, for your consideration. Our next meeting is going to be on July 22nd at 5:00 PM in this room. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Yes, I have nothing to report. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for July 8th. I'm just reading the slide. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Regional Committees Report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I was fortunate enough to attend the ADOPPI graduation event, which was on Saturday here in Federal Way. ADOPPI is a nonprofit organization that means African Young Dreamers Empowerment Program. It's a really cool program. I've attended several of their events. Judge Larson also spoke at this graduation event. They had eight graduates from both high school and college, and three of the graduates graduated from nursing school. And this country desperately needs more nurses, so I was very excited to talk to those young graduates and know that they wanted to go into nursing. I also was able to attend Boy Scout Troop 307 and Cub Scout Pack 307 and Eagle Project over at Northlake Community Center. Evan Testerman built a flag box for retired flags, a little library, which has a place for dog bones so that you can get a dog bone for your dog or share dog bones with other dogs, picnic tables, a community kiosk board, and also did landscaping. And Eagle Projects are really important. It's one of the last steps that a scout has before they become an eagle. And very few scouts make it all the way. It's quite an honor to be there. Yes, we do. And the PIC meeting, the next Wednesday, July 9th, at 7:00, there's going to be a PIC meeting. And at this meeting, if you're interested in attending, it's virtual. We're going to have a discussion on the 0.1% sales tax for KCTD, which is King County Transportation District. The King County Council is the King County Transportation District members, and they don't meet very frequently. This is the first time in several years that they have met. And they want to propose this tax, 0.1%. At the last PIC meeting, we were very concerned about that. And we are drafting a letter that we will discuss on Wednesday, July 9th at the PIC meeting. If 85% of the cities agree to send this letter to King County asking that this tax not be imposed, then that would be done. So if you're interested in attending to listen to that, please do. And as soon as I get a copy of the draft letter, I will share it with the council and the mayor so that everyone knows what's happening at the PIC meeting. We will also be discussing the Washington State Supreme Court and the Indian Gen Defense caseload standards, regional boards and committees, and updates from the SCA staff on criminal justice sales tax. They want to revamp the PIC meetings. They want to have an attendance policy and talking about levies and ballot measures in King County. And that will be virtual, and if you want to attend, I would encourage you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Report.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And as you've already said, our Fourth of July will be this Friday, all day in the park, so come on over. It's going to be an exciting event. And we'll probably have more people here because I think CTAC canceled their Fourth of July event, City of CTAC. So they were worried about safety because they had so many people coming to it. We'll be having July 25th is our 69th Annual Salmon Bake. Are we reminding you? So tickets are available now online, also from some of us on the council. And it's a wonderful event. We usually have about 1,000 people that come to it, and the salmon is unbelievably phenomenal. July 26th, we'll be having a coffee and cookies with the school board at Farmer's Market from 10:00 to noon. So come on over on the next day after the Salmon Bake to the Farmer's Market and sit down and talk with your school board directors and your council. We'll be there to just chit chat with most of you. Councilmember McDaniel and I went to the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Kennewick last week for a couple of days and learned a few things along with EJ. Brian Davis went with us, as well as Steve Groom, and we learned quite a bit. Steve Groom was a presenter for TIF Financing. And we talked about AI and Chatbot, ChatGPT, which should be coming to our city in the near future. Amazing how things change. And so we did also, one thing I did learn that I think would be interesting for those of you who volunteer with the food banks, if you can't find people, a lot of the people can't get to the food banks. First of all, we're having trouble getting the food to the food banks or getting food for the food banks. But secondly, we're having trouble getting food that there's there to the people who need it and are housebound. And apparently, you can call... Who was it? Was it one of the... Hey, Paul, which driver company provides the drivers to go to take the food to the housebound? DoorDash. It's called Dashcom. And so we get a third-party vendor or third-party contributor who will pay for the DoorDash people to take the food from the food bank to the housebound. So just kind of interesting ideas to let you know that there is things out there that you can access if needed. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, now the most important part of the meeting, which is public comment, to hear from the folks that we work for and serve. So you've got three minutes unless you are here representing five individuals that are present, and then you get five minutes. So everybody knows the rules. Green means go. Yellow means you've got 30 seconds. Red means please stop. We do ask to let us know what community you live in, but we do not need your address. Okay, so I'll call everybody, and if you can sort of queue toward the back, that'd be great. First, Ken Blevins, then Gary Grant, then Kevin Morris, Bob Derrigan, Harold Booker, Elna Alke, Susan Strong. And Susan, do you have... Are you representing five people? Okay. I just see a picture. Okay. Vivian Alexander, Bernard Motershead, and then Jan Barber and Barbara Cuny. Okay, Ken.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, for hearing my comments. I'm a Federal Way citizen for 53 years. So what I wanted to talk about, Happy Fourth of July to people coming up here, Independence Day. It's the real No Kings Day, by the way. So, and I wanted to make a comment. I keep on forgetting to say something before Fourth of July at these meetings, but I really wish we would bring fireworks back to Federal Way. I'm not talking about the illegal ones. We're talking about the ones that kids can kind of do with their parents' supervision or in their own neighborhood and bring the neighborhoods together instead of having to come to this one giant place where everybody's at. There's organizations that can have like a tent and be able to make money for nonprofits or whatever it is. That's a good thing about it. I just driven out to Buckley and Enham Claw, and I see those tents out there. It reminds me that we don't have that anymore, and we don't have a parade or fireworks. It's kind of sad. So for us, fireworks for us. So we're American citizens. It would be nice to be able to be free, to be able to do that. And I understand that some things shouldn't be shot up in the air and into people's homes. So I also wanted to say something about our three representatives that decided to cower it out today and not come and speak to us about what they did to us in our state. And I think that's really sad because there are some things that started today, like more gas taxes for people. Claire Wilson talks about working families, but every family gets affected by that. So especially the people that are poor, that can only afford a certain car that probably doesn't have electricity or good gas mileage or whatever it is. Those little ones are really hurt. And so I think it's sad that they don't come up here and speak to or even listen. I'm sure they're going to come next week, but I'm sure they won't stick around to listen to what people think about what they did. So, and just higher taxes. We've got one of the highest taxes out there. They've opened up local cities and stuff like that to be able to increase taxes on our properties. And just stuff like that, just make it harder and harder for people to be able to afford to live in Washington State. I just read that we're the fourth most expensive place to live in the country. And that's not a really good thing to... I mean, it's beautiful here and people want to come here, but just to be affordable, it would be a really good thing. And not affordable housing and the fact that they keep having to tax us to be able to make it affordable for people. But just do smart things and stop taxing us so that apartment buildings don't have to pay so many taxes so they have to raise your taxes and stuff like that. So anyways, maybe we'll see them next time. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And yes, one of the state representatives was under the weather. It's been rescheduled to the 15th, our next city council meeting in a special session. Gary Grant.
Hello, my name is Gary Grant, and I live in Federal Way. The subject that I want to talk about is police body cameras. Now, yes, police body cameras are a good thing if they're used properly. But the way that it's being implemented by this city is not exactly... Well, it's not going to be helpful for us because you have a situation where officers are allowed to turn on their cameras and go onto private property on non-criminal situations and film people. And if they're asked to turn them off, they don't have to turn them off. You say that's accountability? No, it's not. What it is, is them forcing you to be videoed because someone wants to record what you're doing. We have a situation where when the stipulations say if they are there for non-criminal purposes or there's nothing to do with the case that they're there for, it won't be recorded. But they're being told to turn on their cameras when they leave their vehicles, which makes it too late by the time they get to your door. We also have a situation of non-accountability because there's no oversight because they're instructed not to film each other. If they unintentionally film each other, it will be either redacted or erased, and there's no disciplinary action that will be taken if they're on that film and there's something that goes on. At insult to injury, it appears that this city allowed that information, that process, to be a part of the police agreement. Now, that's something that cities don't do. It's called accountability. Yes, we have decent people who are working on that police force. But when you do things like this, the trust of the people goes down the tubes because you're holding us accountable while they're not being held accountable, even if you have proof that something wasn't correct. I have said it before, and there are people on this council who vehemently will not back it, and that's oversight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grant. When public comment's over, Chief, I'll ask you about any input on this. Kevin Morris?
Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, Council, good to see you all again. I'm here to express a disappointment and frankly, a disgust that our elected officials are not here today and that word is, that I understand they're going to be at the next meeting on Zoom, which means they won't be here in person. Is that correct?
Are they... Well, are they coming in person? Oh, I guess I didn't catch that either. My understanding is...
That's unacceptable to me. It's ridiculous. And then at the eve, or not the eve, because that was last night, now this morning, we wake up with six more cents a gallon tax on our gas, and they are the people that voted in the highest gas taxes in the state's history. And the highest, our cost of living is the highest here in Washington. Like Ken said, it's getting incredibly difficult to afford to live in the state of Washington. So I'm going on record with what I say here, just saying I am disappointed and frankly disgusted in our elected officials. I'm going to close now with this, a different subject, that is, I went this morning again to my used-to-be favorite place, Federal Way Community Center. The locker rooms, the sauna, the steam room, all of that was supposed to be open in March. Looks like it's going to be August, might be October. I don't know. To me, that's a big, big managerial debacle. Thanks.
All right. Before we go further, so Heather, they said via Zoom. I thought they were rescheduling for the 15th to be here. Okay. All right, we'll have to talk about that. Thank you. All right, thank you, Kevin, for that information. We'll follow up when the meeting's over. Okay, Bob Derrigan.
Point of inquiry. Years ago, we put a sign out at 320th right near the freeway, which had listed all various service clubs. Before that, we put a monument there inviting people to our wonderful community. My inquiry is, originally, we used to have it lighted at night. It's no longer lighted at night. Now, if you need some donations to help pay for the electricity on that, I'd be glad to contribute to that. Thank you, Mayor, for making that happen. Yeah, and City Council, thank you. Because people need to know that we have many organizations in our community that love them and want to serve them. Lastly, I always offer my prayer in a form of a poem in behalf of our country since we're celebrating 249 years, huh? Freedom Song. Happy birthday, America. Your 249 years strong, a beacon of world freedom, standing ready to right any wrong. A day we can all celebrate, a stewpot of many cultures and races, joined together as equals the sunshine of security on our faces. Each of us as individuals should take time to ponder the score of the sacrifices of our founding fathers, for they risked their lives and more. Throughout our rugged history, there has always been someone to fight, to preserve the American way and values and standing for fairness and right. So take time to wave old glory with voices and trumpet flare, the music of painted freedom torches illuminating the evening air. Yes, happy birthday, America. You're our home of glory. With grateful hearts toward heaven, we continue to write a new story. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Now, Bob, just a quick question. Were you talking about the sign right next to Red Robin that has all the service groups? We're in the repairing that. It's not about electricity. It's about that we are in the process of repairing that. So we got the electricity, but thank you. Very generous. Exactly, exactly. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Harold Booker, the second.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, members of the council. Two topics tonight. Topic one was the comment from last session where we talked about potentially on 320th, having a flag for Pride Month or having a flag for the various other diverse opportunities that we celebrate in this city. This city is incredibly diverse. Wouldn't it be wonderful, as we have all of those American flags along there, to see an Irish flag on St. Patrick's Day or the pride flag? It just would be so welcoming because most of our citizens don't come by City Hall. One topic, I think that might be a great opportunity to share our diversity... to share our diversity with the world. And the second topic is just generally to thank the council and thank the mayor. It is hard work managing a city, managing a well-run city, which while we may have challenges and opportunities, homelessness, there's a lot of challenges that we can all look at. But in general, you guys seem to work together to try and solve problems. And that doesn't happen everywhere. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Elna Alkey. Okay, there may be five. Okay, so five minutes, please.
Good evening to all of you. I have a group with me that shares both sympathy for my personal circumstances as well as a common caring for traffic safety as an important issue in the community. I have been a resident of Federal Way for 56 years. I am now retired, and I am part of the Federalway Alliance Club. And I serve as a volunteer so that I can make contributions that help as many folks as I can with a lot of different issues in the community. But tonight, I want to address a personal situation which concerns traffic safety as it affects my family, but it also affects others in the community if they encounter similar situations. I live on 312th Street, close to Steel Lake. And I live where it intersects with 23rd Avenue South. Forty years ago, when we moved into that house, there was a dirt road from that intersection to 320th, where the mall was built. Now, there is a traffic light at the end of my driveway. And 312th Street is a major thoroughfare in the city. And it's got four lanes plus a turn lane. Traffic going north on 23rd Avenue sees the light and a sign on my driveway entrance that says, "Do not enter local residents only." It's one lane wide, that driveway. And it's a critical thing that it's not perceived by anyone as a continuation of 23rd Avenue South. We all know what happens when you have a few drinks or indulge in the drug of your choice. It changes your perception, and it changes your actions, especially when you're behind the wheel of a vehicle. On two different occasions in January of 2023, vehicles crossed 312th Street into the driveway at relatively high speeds. The first time, on January 8th, the vehicle crashed into a wrought iron gate. It was able to quickly back up out of the driveway and disappear. It did leave its license plate attached to the gate. So I'm sure that there was a little bit of justice done at the end of the process. On January 30th, without the gate there, an intoxicated female drove 100 feet into the driveway, totaled her Lexus and our 2019 Jeep Cherokee. So that's two vehicles you got. They knocked those vehicles into the garage doors. That took the framework of the garage doors down. It scattered the contents of a full garage all over the place, did some damage to a third vehicle. The accident made the paper at the time. Took a year and a half to settle with the insurance end of it. And probably ended with about a $30,000 expense from the insurance company. So that's a big deal. It's been a dead issue. Oh, shit. It's been a dead issue. But two nights ago, on January 29th, here comes another Honda EV crashing through the gate, totals my, my son-in-law's employer's vehicle, truck, flips it over next to it. It did some damage to the house, and so on, and so on. What, what I want to tell you is that, what I plan to do is to give you more information about this in writing so that you've got some documentation. And you can help me by giving me the right people to talk to in the city so I can see if there's anything the city can help do at that intersection. I think it's critical.
All right.
With that said.
Thank you very much. And we're going to do that today. EJ, would you mind talking with Ms., is it Akey? And he'll be over in a few moments, but we're going to make sure. And EJ, a little bit later, when we get done, are you familiar with all these incidents?
I'm familiar with the, the location. I'm not familiar with the incident specifically that she brought up. So I can certainly talk to her tonight, though.
Okay, let's do that. And then let's also, in the interim, before the next council meeting, maybe you could pull the accident reports from the Police Department. And perhaps at the next council meeting, we'll have a follow-up. But let's have you, you know, talk with Ms. Akey first. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members. I'm Susan Strong. I've lived here since 1975. In the weekly email newsletter that the mayor sends out dated December 3rd, 2024, there was a notice about the starting of Block Watch program. And the newsletter looked like this. I don't know if you see this once in a while around town. And I got to thinking about it. And I thought, it said in there, "The Block Watch is a neighborhood safety network where residents partner with the law enforcement to help prevent crime. By staying vigilant, looking out for each other, and reporting any suspicious activity, neighbors build a strong, connected community." So I thought about it and what a great idea it was. So I sent it out to my 20 neighbors, asking what they thought. And I got about half of them to respond, and they thought it was a great idea. So in January of this year, I contacted Tiffany Clemmings, the community engagement coordinator with the Federalway Police Department to begin the process of a Block Watch program. She said I needed to have a current contact list with my neighbors, so I updated my list. And I also created a private page in Facebook as another way to stay in touch with the neighbors. Sorry, that's private. In April, we had the official neighborhood meeting with Tiffany Clemmings and Officer Kyle Butts with the SOU Department, with the Federalway Police. They answered all of our questions about neighborhood security. And we found out that the Fire Department will cut down a tree if it falls on our road because we live on a dead-end road, and we had that happen in November. And we also all got this fancy little magnet for our refrigerator. Sorry, I bet nobody in here has one like this. About June 24th, so last week, Jason Kennedy and his team from the King County Public Works installed our new Block Watch sign at the beginning of our private road. I gave my neighbors about two days' notice to show up for a photo with the sign, and that's the photo you've got there. Only six of us showed up, but we were happy. Thank you to the Federalway Police Department for this wonderful program.
All right, thank you, Susan.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members, members of Federal Way. My name is Vivian Alexander, and I've been a resident of Federal Way for about eight years now. Today, July 1st, the Senate voted to pass President Trump's budget. This budget included elimination of the community development block grant funds to all cities across the United States. The City of Federal Way developed the city's consolidated plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, community development block grant program, years '25 to '29. For the City of Federal Way, elimination of this funding means that the community will not receive approximately the $1,813,000 that are projected for us to receive. These funds are to address four areas as identified in the '25-'29 Consolidated Plan Draft, Page 1. Expand economic opportunities, preserve affordable housing, prevent and address homelessness, establish and maintain suitable living environments. My question is, how will the City of Federal Way address these four areas without federal government funding? That's one question. Hopefully, will it be addressed maybe at a council meeting? At our, I should say that I'm Chair of the Human Services Commission. However, I am not speaking on behalf of the Human Services Commission. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Kim Backrack, Human Services Coordinator, for her work on the Human Services Commission and for all of her support to the commissioners. Kim's last day with the City of Federal Way is on July 10th, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. We'll definitely miss her, and we'll definitely miss these funds. But I guess all cities across the country will be experiencing this same challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. So following public comment, Brian, I'll turn to you and Keith, and we'll, we'll talk about this. And perhaps we'll have a briefing on this at the next council meeting.
Good evening, council, mayor, and the public. This is a continuation of the last time we met on the 17th of June. Alls I was doing was presenting facts. And I don't think the way you treated me was very appropriate, Mr. Powell. Just to play tracks, no other questions. I have no axe to grind with you. I wanted to make that quite clear. But you certainly have got an axe to grind with some of your licensed employees, some members on this council, not all of them, because they was here when this issue went on. And it's continuing. But this is just the tip of the iceberg. There are a lot of homeowners have got to address this when they come to sell their property. I'll give you an example. How many homes is in Bellarino Woods, Rosewood, and Silverwood that are on temporary sewers? Any answer? No. But there is homes on temporary sewers that's been there for 30 years. When the sewer was at the bottom of the street, why was it not brought down the street? So we'll leave that part. The other question is, why was public right-of-way given to a developer? Because they have to address this, too. In the form of title insurance. Lots are bigger than what they are. And then there's a lot of engineering questions to answer. So I've got to apologize this evening to some members of the council which was not present, and there's some members that was present. I have a request into one department. It's been there since January the 13th. I'm not going to mention the department name. Hopefully, I will get the answers. If I don't, then I'm going to come back and ask you to intervene. Thank you, council. Good evening.
Thank you. All right, Jan Barber.
I, I would prefer to step down and give this time to someone else. But good evening to all. I, I came in support of my friend who had this amazing accident when a car hit a work truck and actually bounced off her gutters and slammed into part of her home. And I'm really glad to know that, that people are going to step up and try to help because it, it is a safety issue.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Barbicune. And that's the last pink sheet I have. And while Ms. Kew makes her way up here, do we have anybody online?
Good evening, Mayor, President Kochmar, City Council. Happy Fourth, everybody. I would like to speak today about housing in Federal Way, which does tie into the fact that we're having higher taxes because we may be having higher property taxes as well. I have a friend who is in the process of moving out of state. I went over to help her pack last week. She talked about the grueling process of packing up her family's belongings to get ready for the movers who are coming soon. During the conversation, I asked her if she had to still sell her home before she left. She said no, because she and her family had been renting their townhouse for 13 years because they couldn't afford to buy a home. 13 years. That's a long time to rent. I, too, have been renting an apartment long-term. In my case, it's been nine years. When we moved up from Southern California in 2016, I thought that after I sold my house down there, I would be able to buy one up here. Unfortunately, the market was so high, and continues to be so high, that my husband and I still can't buy a home. I have heard that King County wants to put more low-income housing in Federal Way. Now, there is a need for this for many people. I'm not denying that. But our city is getting far more than its fair share of this type of housing. Builders are more than happy to build this housing because they don't have to pay property taxes on it. As a result, we are getting too much of this type of housing and too little of the kind that people like my friend and I would like to buy. We are being forced out of the housing market. I encourage you to make it clear to King County that we do not want any more low-income housing here. Let Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond take some of this load off our backs. And let there be zoning for single-family dwellings built in Federal Way. The middle class is getting squeezed out of this city, and we don't deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Barber. Okay, thank you. John, I'm going to be calling on you in just a second. So just, I wanted to let you know. Okay, first, okay, EJ, you're going to be following up with Ms. Akey. And Heather, let's have this as a follow-up item at the next council meeting because it was part of public comment. What EJ is going to do is work with the, work with the police. We'll get all the incident reports. And let's figure out, you know, kind of from an engineering standpoint, if there's something that can be done or what steps need to be taken. And we'll talk about this. Also, Brian, let's make sure this is part of management team on Monday. Okay, thank you, Jay. Okay, then, Chief, there was a, Mr. Grant had some questions about, and without getting too comprehensive about this, uh- too comprehensive about this, questions about body cameras and about them being turned on when they're sent to residents for non-police matters or non, I don't know, did you capture Mr. Grant's comments?
Yes, I did.
Did you have any immediate comments or anything you could follow up with later?
The police department's been using body-worn camera, Exxon cameras, for more than three years now, and I would tell you, the program is going really well. Our policies meet the national and state standard for best practices, and when officers respond to calls for service or they make a traffic stop, they're required to activate their body-worn camera. Sometimes, in many occasions, it helps us with criminal prosecution, and also serves as to de-escalate the contact. In many instances, officers inform the other party that they're being recorded. Generally, when people are being recorded, they're usually on their best behavior, so that helps us. In rare occasions when we do have complaints, it gives me and our administration opportunity to review it, and it's also available to the public as well in terms of transparency. So generally speaking, when we have calls for service, they're required to activate their camera.
Okay. Are you aware of Mr. Grant's service delivery concerns?
Yeah, some people don't like to be recorded.
Okay.
You know, bottom line is, our policy requires that they be, the contacts be recorded, so thank you.
Let's do that. What, I see we've got a representative of the department in the back of the room. Would that individual perhaps, I see Mr. Grant is still present, would it be okay if we get a little bit more detail from Mr. Grant tonight, and then we could follow up and discuss this?
Sure, I got Commander Tan here. Why don't we have Commander Tan talk with the resident, and he can maybe answer any questions he might have and do any reviews he likes.
Mr. Grant is indicating a no response, so, but I want to provide the opportunity. Also, would you tell anybody if individuals of the community have concerns of what you and I or what the department refers to as service delivery concerns, what process can they go through? If they feel like, if somebody feels like they've had an encounter with the Federal Way Police Department that they believe doesn't meet the standards that they would expect, what process can a regular resident or citizen go through?
There's several opportunities for the department to review. One, they could contact the supervisor, patrol supervisor on duty through Valleycom and ask for a contact.
Okay.
They can certainly contact the office of the chief, and I would sign that out for a review. They can certainly come to the policy group such as this and ask something to be reviewed. That's another opportunity. There's, come to the front counter of the police department, on-duty patrol commander will contact the resident and start the process of reviewing a complaint and so forth. So there's a lot of opportunities to give feedback and address a complaint.
So there is a written complaint process?
It can be written.
Or oral.
It doesn't want to be, it could be verbal to a commander. We'll document what they say. In some cases, they come to the mayor's office, and I get an email from the mayor's office saying this is what this person said, and there's a review process there. So they don't have to do it in writing. They could do it verbally, writing, email, there's a lot of ways to reach out to us.
Very good. Mr. Grant, thank you for coming tonight. Commander Tan will talk to you, and we'll go over again those options, and if you want to get into the specifics of that with Commander Tan, you can, or go through a more formalized process. Thank you. Mr. Grant, we're not going to go back and forth, but Mr. Commander Tan is present, if you'd like that, or you can always go through the processes that the chief has gone through. Thank you, sir. All right. John, we had a concern by a concerned citizen, Mr. Kevin Morris, about the timing of the community center and about when it was scheduled, when it's due. This is for the redo, no, the reconstruction and the repairs to the locker rooms and the sauna. Would you like to talk about that briefly?
Sure. So the process is chugging along. It is looking great. I'm over there weekly checking on progress. We have, it's inspected every single day. Things are going along really well. Unfortunately, we do have a delay on the receipt of the lockers, the lockers themselves. We expected those to be in in July based on their delivery promise that they could get us to eight to 12 weeks. I believe we ordered 15 weeks in advance, and unfortunately, we were notified that the lockers will not be in until August, and so likely, the community center will open on September 6th, fully reopened and with beautiful, brand-new locker room, sauna, steam, everything will be perfect. And, you know, we apologize for the delay. Some of these things are out of our control. In fact, all of them are out of our control, but they are beautiful, they're looking great, and we can't wait to get them reopened. We're as disappointed as the public in the fact that it's been delayed, but knowing that in a couple of short months, it will be reopened and beautiful for our community and visitors.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as discussed previously, Brian, let's work with Keith in identifying the provisions of the bill that purportedly cut CDBG funding to all cities across America. What our share of that is, I think Ms. Barber talked about $813,000, that sounded about right, and, but let's talk about, you know, the timing of that, when that becomes effective, and some plans, and perhaps I think we should probably identify, and we'll talk about this, let's meet about this before end of the week about, and probably going on next week as well, triage. If that is, if those are truly absolutely not available to us, we'll have to engage in a triage process, identify that, and then work with council to identify what we'll have to do in regard to where we're going to pick up slack or where we cannot. And so let's, we'll go through that process, and we'll work with council for that as well. Council President.
Well, there is one other individual. I don't know if you knew he had a, filled out a pink sheet, I don't know. Mr. Lumpen, did you want to also speak this evening? Not today, okay.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, thank you. All right, well, that, this is the most important thing we do, and so, Mr. Lumpen, when you're ready, we'll be ready, all right? So, thank you very much, Council President. Okay, and now we are on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee. I'll go ahead and read all the items, and then, I know one council member has an item that they've pre-identified. I'll read through all the items and then see if a council member wants one or more items pulled from the consent agenda. Okay. 5A minutes for the 2017 to 2025 City Council Special Meeting and Regular Meeting Minutes. Item B, AP vouchers, May 16th through June 16th, 2025, and payroll vouchers, May 1 through May 31 of 2025. Item C, monthly financial report, May 2025. Item D, tourism enhancement grant recommendations, 2025, excuse me, 2026, Performing Arts and Events Center operational support. Next, item E, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, RIVC Productions, NPC IFBB Northwest Championships. Item F, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, Pacific Northwest Association of Swimmers, USMS National Championships. Item G, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, Elite Productions, NPC IFBB National, excuse me, Northwest Championships. Item H, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, Seattle Sports Commission Membership. Item I, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, Wild Waves Fiesta Buena Anda. Item J, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, Pacific Raceways NHRA and Drag Race. First, well, council, I'm going to open this up if you have any items you'd want pulled for separate considerations. Councilman McDaniel?
Yes, I'd like to pull J, please.
J is pulled. Councilmember Honda?
I wanted to pull that also.
Okay. All right. All right, council, any other items to be pulled for separate consideration? Okay, hearing none. Council President?
Mayor, I move approval of council agenda items A through I.
Second.
It's been a motion, second, to move items A through I of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those masses, those matters pass unanimously. Item J, tourism enhancement grant recommendation, 2025, Pacific Raceways NHRA and Drag Race. We have Meredith, our Economic Development Director, here, and also Jason Fiorito with Pacific Raceways, ready. Councilmember McDaniel, did you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll start it off. The main thing I want to pull on this one is, one of the only ones, it wasn't like locally based, it's not actually in the City of Federal Way, if I believe correctly, it's down in Auburn, and I just wanted to get some clarification. We have done these guys in the past, and they asked for a little bit larger money, and my question's always the return on investment for these things. I know this is done through the LTAC for bringing in lodging tax and bonuses like that, or increased revenues for that, but what is the metrics, or how are we going to track? They stated that for the money they asked for, that we'd have roughly 100 rooms for spectators at the courtyard by Marriott. What is our plans for being able to verify that these, to get a number actually for how many people stayed?
Okay, so that's the question, and Jason, maybe you could be with Meredith at the podium, but let's also, if we could, let's get Councilmember Honda's question on the record as well, and then we will answer as much as we can. Councilmember Honda, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, we've approved this before. I've been asked questions by the community as to why we approve this, since it is not in the City of Federal Way, and I've been asked those questions again recently. So what I'd like to have explained is what benefits the City of Federal Way gets from providing this funding.
Okay, Meredith, I'll start with you.
Sure. Well, so thank you very much, Mayor and Council. My name is Meredith Neal, I'm the Economic Development Director here. So, this event is a three-day event, and the projected overnight stays for it are close to 6,000 overnight stays within the region. This event is in unincorporated King County, kind of adjacent to both Federal Way and Auburn. The projected attendees this year are 26,000. Last year, there were 20,000 tickets that were sold to the event. Along with that, you have the people who are coming into race, you have other support staff, and that's what brings it up to about 26,000. Of those, 50% of them, a little over 50%, come from more than 50 miles away, so about 14,000 people. And so certainly, when you look at the number of hotels that are in the area right around there, we have quite a few people who come to the hotels within Federal Way and stay here. I would say that in the LTAC committee discussions about this item, that the hoteliers are very supportive of it. Last year, the weekend that this event happened, the hotels were all full. There was another event at that same time. So anecdotally, they believe that a lot of it came from this event, they aren't quite certain. So one of the things that we will be working on is getting better data, using cell phone data and some other things to figure out where people are actually staying within the city related to this event, and then I'll kick it over to Jason.
Jason, you have a few words you'd like to share?
Yeah, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council President, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and ask for your continued support. This racetrack was built by my grandfather in 1959, opened for business coincidentally July 4th, 1960, and on a personal note, now that I have two kids in the armed services, one up in the Air Force in Ileson Air Force Base in Fairbanks, and one that just got back from the Army in Korea, he's stationed at JBLM. God bless America, and God bless our service members and veterans that kept us safe. But I want to go on record as saying that racetracks are regionally beneficial. They're regionally beneficial to everybody but the racetrack operator, because as my property tax crested $992,000 this year, an average of about $2,700 a day that I pay to the county just to exist on that piece of property, my family loses on average between $700,000 and $800,000 a year. So we subsidize this track as a family, and we humbly ask the support of our neighboring cities because this isn't just one event. We fill hotels in Auburn and Federal Way predominantly. There's not very many hotels in Kent to support, but we support them from April until September, almost every weekend. And your support of the track is visible all year round, and it's really a year-long partnership, not just around this weekend, as we host regional races on the road course and drag strip almost every weekend from April through September. That has a spillover effect in predominantly Federal Way and Auburn to stores, hotels, restaurants, and every business in your city. So I hope there's not a perception that we're adding to our profit. I haven't seen a profit there in the 23 years I've been running it. In fact, it operates at a pretty substantial loss. This helps mitigate that loss and helps us not go the way of many of the racetracks in the country. You'll notice Denver isn't on the NHRA schedule this year, they folded up tents. Houston isn't on the schedule this year, they're being torn down right now. Chicago was torn down. So we're one of the closest racetracks to a major metropolitan area that hasn't been eaten by underlying land value exceeding what the use is. So my family's committed to this facility, we feed it with every other business we have that is profitable, but your help and your partnership is instrumental in keeping a racetrack alive in King County for the community. So I'm humbly asking for the support and I'm proud to do whatever it takes to maintain it, and if there's any other requests that are outside the four corners of this contract that we hope to sign with you, we're open to all suggestions, so thank you.
Meredith, can you remind everybody how much we're talking about?
Yes, the request this year is for $75,000. Last year, it was funded at $50,000, and the year before that, it was funded at $50,000.
Was there any, was there any split vote at the LTAC meeting?
There was no split, it was unanimous.
Okay, Councilman McDaniel, this was your initial motion.
Yeah, yeah. So just two quick questions. So you mentioned this is actually, even though it shows the event as being one time, but this is actually more of the season for you guys then. My second question is going to be is, the $75,000, what is the average you ask for cities? Do you depend on your ask given the city? Because LTAC is a separate fund, so it's a little bit easier, but I do know that almost all cities are starting to take the screez, and sooner or later, as you heard, we're going to have to start looking for money. This money can't be used for anything else, really, but at the same time, what is the average amount that you guys are usually looking for with the $25,000 jump from last year?
Candidly, we're looking for as much as we can get to mitigate our losses. So Auburn funded us at $100,000 this year, and we're asking for $75,000 from the City of Federal Way, because we kind of structure our ask with as much as we think we can get approved, but it still doesn't bridge the gap between our income and our expenses. We do this as a family because this is the training ground for all of our municipalities and the King County Police Departments. So we feel like we get kids off the street and street racing, we train all the municipal cops and the King County cops in the area there for their PIT and EVOC training, and it simply is not a profitable business. So we're asking through the LTAC because that seemed to be the route available to us, but really, what we are is a partner with the city to provide what we consider to be a public service, and that's why my family has endured the consecutive year losses that we have there, because this is something that my grandfather built, and I'm going to make it alive and succeed, or I'm going to die trying.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you for showing up.
Councilmember Dobbie?
Yeah, I, you know, I support supporting this track because we, if you just think about it, we are filling up all the hotel rooms during this one particular time, but I think we should get some reporting more of, if we have cell phone data throughout the year, because it's a good point to think about, there aren't that many hotels near this track, and if people are coming from other areas as they've been closing, we should see an uptick in hotel rooms that we wouldn't really be thinking about. So we need to think more globally about the whole season and get reports of how many events there are, how many rooms might be going to be rented. They're either going to go to Auburn, or they're going to come to Federal Way. We could get more involved in Federal Way to promote people to come to our hotel rooms. This is a marketing game, it's a sales organization, it's a, we want to get people into our rooms, this is, it could be a good conduit, so I'm supporting of doing this. I would just ask that we get a little bit more creative in sending people up to Federal Way in other weekends or other things, which are going to come anyway, and market it a little bit more. Thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So I believe last year or the year before, there were commercial ads that were done at the racetrack during this event that featured Federal Way? And will you do that again this year?
Absolutely. We have the ability to put up B-roll on the Jumbotron that are in front of, and the 26,000 fans, I think is a pretty accurate number, but they are, those aren't the number of fans that are at the event, because a number of them show up repeatedly, and some of them are locally. I think the number's actually a little bit low, but yes, we have the ability to run B-roll on the Jumbotron in front of our 26,000 that are there at any given point, probably closer to 60,000 over the weekend, and we also have the ability to give NHRA, because they're their own production company, they put that they put that show in the can, and then broadcast it live on network Fox. So we're one of the few live network TV broadcasts because of NFL and NASCAR schedules. That gives us the ability to work with NHRA to promote things directly with Federal Way. So there are opportunities that I think we haven't explored, that we're willing to go down every rabbit hole to make this worth your while.
Thank you. Do you anticipate asking for an increase next year?
You know, I don't, because we're trying to get more efficient with our operations and mitigate our costs. We're also exploring ways of upping our revenue on both the road course and drag strip. So over time, we know that this probably isn't sustainable to get essentially subsidies from the cities, and we'd like to increase our revenue in the commercial development and on the track. And in fact, I've got some legislation in front of King County Council right now that will help us increase revenue. So we're looking at this hopefully as a stopgap measure to keep ourselves alive for long enough that we can get some help from the county.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yeah, I have one last question. Just out of curiosity, knowing what your property taxes are, what are you guys zoned as?
We're zoned IP industrial with a P suffix that restricts us to racetrack use. And that's one of the things I'm asking the King County Council to relax a little bit, because one of the profitable centers of my business is the commercial development. However, only catering to those folks that predominantly use the racetrack already is limiting my ability to rent out commercial space. And the more commercial space I can rent out, the less subsidies I need from either my family or our neighboring city. So because there's a shortage of commercial and industrial space in King County with a dedicated interchange, and because those uses are relatively benign compared to the top-field dragsters that run down the track, we're hoping that King County sees the wisdom of allowing us to continue to develop economically, provide jobs, living wage, wages, and augment the income of the track so that we can be sustainable.
I'd like you to have a game plan for that one. I have no other questions, but if you wanted to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I move to, I move approval of Consent Agenda Item J.
Second.
Spin the motion a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Thank you. Great questions, all. All right. All right, now moving on to Item Six, Council Business. Item A, Council Confirmation of Human Resources Director Jessica Neal Hoysen. Brian Davis, our City Administrator, will give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. Proposed before you is a nomination of our new Human Resources Director, Jessica Neal Hoysen. Jessica was our top candidate in the recruitment process and comes to us from the City of Edmonds, where she's been there for six years. She has a wealth of experience in the municipal HR arena, again with Edmonds, and then also with Skagit County, Oak Harbor, and Bainbridge Island as well. She has multiple degrees and is well-qualified. We're excited to have her, and she is also here with us today, if you want her to come up and say a few words.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Please. And while she's doing that, Jason, great presentation before. Thank you, and thank you for being here. Very much appreciate you. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council President, Council. I am very excited to be here, very excited to join the City of Federal Way. A little bit about me that you may not know from my background and my professional background, I grew up in Alaska. I grew up with parents who were what I call Berkeley hippies. We lived off the land. We grew up with a wood-burning stove in Alaska, grew our own food, hunted and fished. And then I became aware of public sector. Both my sister and I are both in public sector and have gotten careers in helping to shape how things progress in our political organizations. I am very lucky that I came across HR, and I found that I had this ability to impact how employees, that impacted the people they served, and got great, you know, satisfaction from doing that. So I was very lucky to hear that Vanessa was leaving. I'll say this. I actually live in this area, and I have been commuting to Edmonds to go help Edmonds for many years. And after some discussions with Vanessa, I was really excited about coming and helping to serve the City of Federal Way. So I am very appreciative of being here. I look forward to working with all of you. I hope you know that one of the things I see as my role is, I am very behind the scenes when I am the HR Director, but what I am doing is helping to support all the employees that help provide the services to the residents of the people we serve. And it is a great privilege to be able to do that. So I am very happy to be able to do that with Federal Way.
All right, great. Thank you, Jessica. Any questions of Jessica, Council? Council President?
Well, welcome, Jessica. You're with Mercyhurst College in Pennsylvania, and I'm from Merrillhurst College in Lake Otis, Oregon. Very similar. So thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Jessica Neal Hoysen as our Human Services, Human Resources Director.
Is there a second?
Second.
Spin the motion a second to confirm Jessica Neal Hoysen as our new HR Director. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's official and unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you all. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Great.
When do you start?
Well, the Mayor of Edmonds asked me if I could not leave until November, and I told him no. So I do start on the 16th of July.
Welcome.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, now, we've got Item B, Modification of the King County Regional Opioid Abatement Council Agreement. Ryan Call, our City Attorney, will give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council. I'm here to present, which I think is pretty much a housekeeping measure. The opioid abatement council has asked us to modify the agreement that creates them and governs them. By way of background, I want to explain a little bit about what this organization is. As you all recall, we've had multiple settlements of opioid litigation. The Attorney General of Washington State basically negotiated separately from the national settlements for our state, and we have one document that controls how this money is spent. So there was multiple lawsuits, but they all use the same structure in their settlement. And part of that structure is to set up this thing called the Opioid Abatement Council. It's created by interlocal agreement by all the affected King County partners. It's a four-member body composed of two employees of King County, one employee of, or one, I don't believe it's, I believe it's an employee of Seattle, and then one employee from Auburn, who represents all of the other cities of the, of King County. So the goal or the purpose of this organization is to make sure that the settlement money is used as we agreed we would use it. So they get 10% of all settlement funds to do that. So the problem we have today is that the original agreement contemplated a fairly even distribution of the money. They thought it would come on a regular schedule, and so 10% would be fine, because it would spread out over the entire settlement period. It looks like the money's actually going to spike at the front end of the settlement period, and then it'll taper off towards the end. So they're realizing now, as they look at their, their plans, that they're probably not going to have enough money to continue operating at the end of the period if they refund the monies that are not spent at the beginning of the period. So their proposal is basically to add May to the agreement that currently requires them to refund annually any money not spent. They would like to have the discretion to keep the money in their coffers with the knowledge that at the end of the period, no matter what, it all will come back to the cities if they don't spend it. In addition to that, they also would like to streamline the contract amendment process. This is a little less straightforward, but it still makes sense. This is an entity that doesn't have a lot of interactions with the cities. It's fairly autonomous. And currently, if they have problems like this one, they need all of the member cities to agree to this interlocal contract amendment, which is a lot of cities. And it's highly unlikely that the cities would object to the proposals that are being made, but it's a paper chase. It's a huge administrative burden on all of these cities to pass an amendment to do what, in this case, seems like a pretty logical thing. So what they're proposing is to create a structure where cities have a chance to speak up and object, and if there's an objection, then it comes to a more formal adoption process. But without objection, it can be adopted after a certain period of time. So those are the two proposed changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. What does the 10% actually cover? And how was Auburn chosen to be the city to represent the, the whole city?
I do not know how Auburn was chosen. So I'll look into that.
Does that rotate so that...
It's South Sound.
Okay. Does that rotate so other...
I don't know.
Okay.
So it's the South Sound cities, and that organization picked that person, and I'm not sure how they picked that person.
Okay.
And then the money is, it's administrative costs, so attorney's fees and staff time.
And there are four staff members?
There's four people on the, on the council. I believe, it appears to me that the county is the one running most of the administration of it. So I think it's actually falling to one employee or two.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Doby?
Could you remind me of how much money we're talking about that's coming to the state?
So all in, it's a lot. It's upwards of $800 million. But we don't get near...
No, we get a small part, but they're asking for $80 million? 10% of the take? Is that what they're asking for?
10% is actually a pretty standard administration fee.
But every business transaction I've ever been in, you, you're all equally into it, but they're asking, I want to make sure I understand, they're asking for 80 million upfront?
I don't know. I know, I know how...
Why are we having this discussion?
I know how King County is doing it. So, and the King County Opioid Abatement Council contract, 10% is the number.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the number, but why are they not taking any risk and all the cities are by front-ending it? I mean, it seems to me like they've decided they can't run their business on 80 million dollars the way it's coming in over the period of time, and they want their money all upfront.
Well, it's not 80 million dollars.
Well, 10% of...
It's 10% of what King County gets.
Okay, so...
Which is a very small percentage of the 80 million dollars. I don't know the full number, but it's probably closer to...
50 million?
Probably closer to 50 million.
So they're asking for 5 million upfront, potentially?
It's annual. So as the money comes in, 10% goes to their coffers. So, for example, this year, we've had four dispersments. They, for us, they've ranged between 26,000 and $30,000.
Yeah, it's not...
And so 10% of our money goes to them.
And I'm not questioning that. What I'm questioning is, what I think I heard you say is, they want to modify it so they don't get it every year, every month, or whatever, they want it upfront?
No.
Because they can't operate their business on 10%.
The current structure is, they have to refund any money not spent at the end of that fiscal year.
And why would we want to change that?
Well, because they're going to go defunct at the end of the period. So this year, that's fine, they can operate, no problem. But at the end of the year, when they expect to get almost no dispersals, they would have basically no operating budget for those years.
Then why do we need them?
We're required by law to have them.
If we have no money coming in?
Yes. That's part of the settlement agreement. This is what we signed up for. So in exchange for the opioid companies giving us collectively, the state, $800 million, this is the structure that we agreed to collectively.
But we're going to, how, when do they end? When the money's done?
2039.
I see.
So it'll be dispersed. So up to this point, I asked, do you have the number, Steve, current to date?
To date, we've received $476,000, and we've just parked it as restricted funds. We haven't budgeted it.
Right. And I believe all in, at the end of the period, we'll have somewhere around 1.5 million.
I don't know. Sounds like a great deal for them and a bad deal for us. I mean, I don't mind paying them the money. It just seems that the way they're asking for it is a little backwards. But maybe I'm missing something.
Okay. Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Sevadawson, go ahead.
Okay. So you said at the end, if not used, then it'll come back to the cities?
Correct.
So does it come back to the pot, and then we get new dispersment, or...
No, we're each paying, we get the money from them to begin with, so they retain 10%. So each city will get 10%. Well, whatever's left of the 10% will be returned to the city, prorata, according to what we've...
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Doby?
All right, to add confusion to the topic. So if I understand you correctly, there is money that will be dispersed to the county, but they're going to front-load the actual dispersment? And if we have the current contract in play, at the end of the year, because they front-loaded it, the residual, which would be a large chunk of money, would be given to the cities. And if they do that, they're going to empty out their coffers, that they're not going to be able to pay their employees for the remaining period of this payout?
I'm not sure I tracked all that, but yes. So let me rephrase it. Every, so the money comes from the plaintiff, the defendants in the lawsuits. They are paying on a schedule, and originally, I think it was anticipated that it would be a fairly linear payment schedule. It looks like they're paying more upfront and less towards the end. So, which is odd. I'm not sure why that is, but usually you would expect it to be the opposite, because of the time value of money, it makes sense to try to pay, put off as long as you can to pay the money. But they're doing it the opposite. So every year, after they've done their job, the AOC, the Abatement Council, is supposed to return whatever they haven't spent. That's what they've been doing these first three years that they've implemented. Now they've realized that the money is spiking towards the front of the, of the settlement period, and they expect it to taper off dramatically towards the end of the settlement period. So there's a lot of uncertainty here. They don't have control over the money coming in, and so I think they just are looking for flexibility to respond budgetarily to those, those issues. And the, the answer to that, in their minds, is to give them flexibility, keep the money that they think they need to keep of the 10%. And then if, at the end of the settlement period, there's money left over, we'll still get it back.
Where does the money sit? What account, and who holds the funds?
It's, it's kept in a trust.
A trust.
So I don't know what bank it's in.
So there's no interest being accumulated on the funds that we know of?
I can't imagine that there's not interest involved in this transaction.
And then who gets the interest? Does it fall back into the fund?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can look into that for you.
I'd appreciate that. And then...
Not that it matters to us at all. I mean, we get what we get according to the agreement that we signed, but I guarantee that someone's getting interest payments.
I'm assuming so myself, too. I wouldn't, I wouldn't let money go away either.
Yeah.
And I guess my second part is, what happens if we say no, and we like, eh, we don't want to change the contract?
Then we'll have to, I think at some point that there's so many cities involved that they would have to make a unilateral decision. So I'm not sure. We are required to have this entity operational in order to get this money, as part of the settlement. So there is a legal requirement that it, that it stay running. So worst-case scenario, if we, through our collective actions, cause this thing to go belly up, we'd be in default to the settlement.
But by us not agreeing to a new term of the contract, how would we be not holding to the first contract? This is, they're asking for a change to the contract rather than...
Yeah, so it's important to keep in mind that this contract is not something that the defendants came up with, or the state of Washington came up with. The cities, this is interlocal agreement created by the cities of King County to satisfy this requirement of the settlement agreement. So it's kind of, it's our agreement.
Gotcha. And I assume that other cities are having the same conversation right now?
They are, yes.
So do we know if anybody else has voted on this?
I did, no, they haven't. It was a pretty quick turnaround. Just a side note, I don't mean to throw more fuel to the fire, but originally, they said, hey, if you have any problems, let us know. Otherwise, just acknowledge us in email. And so not a lot of lawyers are working for them. All the attorneys on the email immediately said, that's not how this works. We all have to go to our entities and get a vote from our council, and we need to have a formal contract. So they're working on that part of it now. and we need to have a formal contract. So they're working on that part of it now. I think that once they consulted with their legal staff, they realized they needed to do that. So I'm not sure where each city is in getting this approved. But I think most cities will view it as I would, which is that we need council's approval to amend the contract.
Got you. And I'm just curious, like I said, when it gets thrown out, we got to vote on it right here. It's always curious to know how other people are doing it, and what happens if not, and stuff. The what-ifs are always interesting on this stuff. And especially the fact they need 10%, flat 10%. If they only have two or three employees, and it's $50, it's $5 million for two or three employees, I'm definitely in the wrong industry then. So I appreciate the information, though.
And I don't, they do keep looks, and they get audited. So they're not spending this money on frivolous things. I just don't know.
Yeah. I guess the only thing I would say is, once we do probably vote on it tonight, is I'd be interested to know if they do collect interest, if the money goes back for the cities, or if that money is diverted into the...
It does not go to the cities. So I know that much.
That seems like a crock, but man. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, you know, looking out of the audience here, I see a lot of very acquisitive looks on faces, like, what the heck is all of this? And so just to kind of back up a little bit, you know, the state sued the pharmaceutical companies. The state's receiving about $800 million over a number of years. And so am I assuming, correct in assuming that that will be receiving some until 2039, since you said that's when the agreement ends?
That's correct.
And so it'll come in segments until 2039?
Yes.
And that money, the purpose of it, is to help fight the opioid problem, correct?
It's to abate the effects.
Abate the effects. Abate the effects. And so this organization was set up to manage that money in order to abate the effects?
This, it was set up to disperse the money, and then ensure that when we spend it, we report to them how we spent it, and they will ensure that we spent it consistent with the settlement.
So are they spending money, or when you say that they spend the money, are they spending it by distributing it to the cities?
The only thing that the council spends money on directly are their operating costs. All the money comes to each city, and then each city spends it as they see fit, but as constrained by the settlement agreement. So it has to be to mitigate the effects of the opioid crisis. And there's a 20-page document that describes all the things we're allowed to use it on and things we're not. And so each city spends the money.
Okay. So the 10% is 10% of what is coming in each year?
Yes.
So they're required to disperse 10%?
No.
Or, I think that's what some of the looks out here are, is what is meant by that 10%?
They keep the 10%, that's their operating costs, the council. So they need to operate their organization with that money.
So their overhead is 10%?
At the most. That's how much that we've set aside for them. And anything not spent, they need to return to the cities.
Okay. And so what they're wanting to do is, instead of spending all that 10% upfront, is they sub them that 10% so that they're, they can keep going longer. Is that correct?
What they want to do is to have the settlements, to have the time where they return the money, to be discretionary. So it'd either be at the end of the period, at 2039, or more likely, it would be when they feel comfortable that the next year has enough money to operate.
Okay. I think I follow that. Hopefully, like I say, I've been getting some looks from out there, like, what's going on, you know?
And I hear you. This is actually a very common setup for, we do it with our CDBG funds. We have a certain percentage that we use to pay our employees to proctor those funds on behalf of the federal government. That's the same thing that this is. They're spending 10% to manage this money and supervise it, basically.
Okay. That makes things a little clearer. Hopefully, others can understand a little better as well.
Councilor Doby?
Just, I guess, one last comment. I have no problem with the 10% to operate their business. That makes sense to me. But you would hope they would go out of business. I mean, they're going to wind down, and instead of having 20 employees, or how many they have, they might have one at the very end. And I have a hard time voting for this change because I don't even know what their operating costs are. Do we know how many employees they have?
I do not.
Or what it costs to administer this money? Or we just, hey, we got an email, we need more money, or we need to smooth it out, we'll do it?
Well, let's smooth it out.
I mean, that's the only question I...
Two things. One, they're not a business. So they're a supervisory organization. And just to be clear, as far as bringing, things tapering off towards the end, I don't think that's how it's going to work. I think that their supervisory capacity, this is going to ramp up towards the end of the period, because that's where cities will have more money to spend. So most of the cities are like us. They're sitting on it. They don't really know what to do with it yet. So I wouldn't be surprised if they get hit towards the end with more work than they do at the front.
So Ryan, you're not aware of any other city that's done this yet?
Done.
Voted on this?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Doby, if you, and actually, councilmembers, if you had a list of a couple of questions, what do you...
I do have a timeline, so...
What's that?
They do, they do want, they're trying to get this done in the next month, so...
Well, they're trying to, but they're not required to. And we have a couple of questions. Councilmember Doby, have you, let me ask you a question. You've run businesses for a long time. What do you want to know?
Have we ever seen, how many people are administering this money, and what's it cost? I mean, 10% is 10%, but...
Okay. So you want to know the number of people that they're employing? What else?
And, you know, what, then you could look at their cash flow based on what's coming in, and do they really need all this, or do they need it in 2035?
So you want an understanding of what their overhead is?
Yes.
Where their office space is, what their...
Please.
Catcher Walsh, you had a couple, we're going to work our way down here. Are you taking this down?
No.
Counsel?
It's recorded.
What's that?
It's recorded.
Okay. All right, good. Councilor Walsh, you had a couple of questions. What do you want to know?
I think I agree with Councilmember Doby. I mean, I want to know just how it's being spent, what the, where it's going, how they're using it.
Your mic. Councilor Walsh, your mic.
Sorry about that. Okay. Technology's tough for me. I had to hit the button first.
You want to know what?
So to know, basically, what Councilmember Doby was asking, you know, how the overhead's being used, what they have as far as staff, what their expenses are, and really what that part goes to support.
Okay. Councilor McDaniel, you had a, and then we're going to...
Just to add on to that one, my big one would be is the...
Mike?
Thank you. It's going to be the, who owns the bank account, and who collects on the interest.
Okay. All right. Councilor, Rhonda?
Yeah, thank you. My original question was on the 10%, what it went to and who it supports, so...
Could you say that again?
My original question was the 10%, what it went to and who it supports.
Who it went to and what it supports. Got it. Okay, thank you.
I have a cold. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure we got it. Councilmember Seifadawson? I hope you're getting the idea of where we're going here, because my recommendation to the council is not to pass this tonight, but to, I'm going to be seeking a motion to continue this to the next meeting, in which we're going to get answers to these questions. Council President, do you have any questions?
No, I, I'm actually happy we're getting some money from somebody.
I agree. But it is, it is public money. It's a big, and actually, go ahead.
I think it's a good thing to understand how the money is used and where it's coming from.
I don't mean to be flippant. I'm not trying to be dismissive when not having these answers for you. It's not our role to audit them. They are audited by the state auditor every year.
It's not going to matter what we do, because then it's huge.
But I'm happy to bring it back.
And if they're, if these, so these questions should be readily available. And I want to make sure, since we work for the folks here out in the public, that we've got these answers. Councilmember Tran, our finance chair, do you have anything you want to know?
No, I'm comfortable with this, because regardless of whether or not we get the information from them, it's not going to change much. So I'm okay with it.
Very good.
One more question would be, if Auburn will continue for the long term to be the representative of all of the cities?
And how that happened?
Yes.
How did Auburn, that's a great question. How did Auburn become the spokesperson or the leader, essentially, the person that, the entity, the community that's leading that, or if that rotates, and on what basis? All right, Council, Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to postpone this, the motion, take this, you want to postpone this till the next regular meeting?
That's right.
I second that.
I'm sorry. Okay, there's been...
I was trying to restate the motion.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to restate the motion, but you were doing it, too. So I'll stay out of it. Go ahead.
Make a motion to postpone this discussion until the next regular meeting.
Okay. And Councilmember Walsh made the second. Okay, so when, in the interim, you're going to find out, you're going to do your best to find out this information and get it back to the council. And when this gets presented, we'll have it on some PowerPoints. Councilmember Doby, that, meet your...
I think that's great. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions on this? There's been a motion and a second to push this to the next council meeting, in which these questions can be answered. We'll get those. And then if it meets with council's satisfaction, we would proceed or not proceed. All those in favor?
Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
So I kind of agree, I do agree with Councilmember Hong. What difference does it make whether or not we get these answers or the questions?
Well, it's public money.
Just clarification.
Okay. Councilmember Hong, you want to say that?
Just clarification.
So do we still need to postpone it, then?
I think that we need this, well, I would, I think, actually, from the questions I'm hearing, and because we're talking public money, we should probably know the answers. Well, I don't get a vote. But what I'm hearing from councilmembers is a concern that we have this information prior to voting on it. And if you don't think we need it, then you don't need to vote in favor of it.
No, my point is, I don't know if it's going to change the outcome.
It may not.
So it might make sense to vote, but still ask the questions.
Okay. So there's, then your vote would be a no for the continuation, and you'd want to vote yes now. So that would be a possible course. Is there any, but that's a great, that's a great point of, point of information. So is there anybody else who'd like to discuss this?
I agree with Councilmember Seifadawson. I think you're totally right. It's not going to make a bit of difference what we do. But, you know, I think the way the motion is, it makes it more, so that we do have a good discussion at the next meeting, just because people do want to clarify what's going on. And I really would like to know how come Auburn got selected.
It is, it's a good question.
That's one thing I want to know. But other than that, I'm happy we're getting the money. Yeah.
We've already had $400,000 of money dispersed to the city. We've already had $400,000 money dispersed to the city for this purpose. This will obviously be a good opportunity for us to talk about how we should start thinking about investing that money. Councilmember Walsh and Councilmember Doby?
Yeah. I was just going to say, I mean, chances are that, you know, in two weeks, we'll vote to approve it. However, I don't like voting to approve something that I don't fully understand what it is. And so that's my reason for wanting to delay, just to have a better grasp of it, a better understanding. I doubt very much if it'll change the outcome, but I think that we should understand it better.
Very good. Councilmember Doby?
I ditto that.
Okay. All right, what he said. All right. Councilor Tran, our numbers guy?
Mayor, I just want to clarify my position. I understand that people want more information before they vote. Totally understand that. But many of you stated that by delaying this vote, there may not be anything changed, right? Everything should be the same. So my whole point is, why delay something that we know that is not going to change anything? And staff stated that he needed to move this along, because there will be a deadline, or deadline in near, or whatever. So why are we spending time asking staff to do more research, more information, knowing that the final outcome may not be, you know, may not change anything? So that's my position. But I'm okay. I mean, if you, most of you want to delay this for another two weeks, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Mayor, just to be clear, I don't believe two weeks is going to matter, one way or the other.
Good to know. Okay, thank you. Good discussion, everybody. I mean, I think, what I, well, it's, I don't get to vote. What I think doesn't matter. So I'll stop talking.
Boy, it's about time you figured that out.
So for those that do get to vote, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Matter passed unanimously. Thank you, Ryan. All right. A moment of candor. All right. So let's, now we're on to item seven, ordinances. Item A, we're here for second readings. Item A, Council Bill 913, ordinance creating the position of warrant officer in the Federal Way Police Department. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 913, ordinance creating the position of warrant officer in the Federal Way Police Department, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to warrant officers, adding a new section to Chapter 2, 25 Federal Way Revise Code.
All right. Councilmember Walsh?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, okay. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah. I guess it would be chief. I'm curious to know what this new position being open of warrant officer, we went to some meetings this last week, and they were talking about gang activities. They're talking about the new crime, talking about how they're trying to change up with the social media and all that stuff. Is there a possibility, well, actually, the first question is, what is the major difference between a sworn warrant officer and a warrant officer, and what they can and cannot do?
Simply put, it's the training requirements. So when many of the reform laws occurred in the state of Washington, we're a general law enforcement agency. So the training requirement for having limited commission personnel, we have to send them to the academy, just like police officer positions. So, but the law was created where cities could create their ordinance, creating the warrant officer position, so which allows us to maintain the same, you know, job description, transport officers. To simply creating this ordinance allows us to keep or jail transport officers without providing additional training than what we do already. So in essence, we're just doing it because the law requires it.
No, I understand that one. But since we're making this new position, my question is, is this now a vessel that could be used in the future as law enforcement changes with the new digital stuff, where it's, we don't need to have a sworn officer, a warrant officer would fit that bill it now? That's why I was wondering, what is the difference between the two? Because if this is, if this goes through, then that actually, in my mind, is a potential future positive, where we can actually look at increasing warrant officers for things, to release the sworn officers, to do what they're more situated for, better trained for. So I'm asking, like, what the difference would be, so I can kind of visualize that in the future. Does that make sense?
There's limited, yes, I think so. There's limited things that the warrant officers will be able to do. And that's transport prisoners. So that's their main function.
Gotcha.
They can do some parking enforcement.
Okay.
So now, they're part of the Police Support Service Association. So if they were to change anything with the job description, if they were going to do any work that the officers do, then we would have to bargain with both groups.
Gotcha.
So there's limited things that these officers can do, and there's general, you know, police officer positions. So you can't encroach on any labor work unless it's agreed upon by the city.
So like the, I'm going to, two more questions, I'll let it go at that. So like, right now, we have officers in the schools. Do those positions required a sworn officer?
Yes.
And they will always require a sworn officer for what they do?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other one would be, is a big one is the internet. A lot of the gang activity, a lot of the drugs, everything's done on the internet. I'm assuming right now, it's probably investigators. Is that something that maybe a future would be a sworn officer position, where they could actually handle that for officers?
It would be sworn officer positions, detectives and special investigations unit. They're police officers.
No, I get that. I'm just trying to figure out why some of these, what I would think would have been lower requirement, or lower, I don't want to say skilled requirements, but lower priority for law enforcement, in my mind. So I was just checking to see what the capabilities of this position would be in the future. So...
Right. They're very limited in scope in terms of what they can do. And that's from state law, in terms of warrant officer positions, because they have less level of training. So, and two, there's labor issues, that if they were start to do and work, a police officer would have to bargain for it.
Interesting. All right. I'll pick with you later then. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilor Walsh?
No.
Okay. It's been a mo, me too. No, that's right. I don't, okay. Councilmember, councilmembers, there's been a motion and a second and a discussion and questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Matter passed unanimously. Item B, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 914, ordinance commute trip reduction, CTR ordinance and Federal Way CTR plan. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 914, ordinance commute trip reduction, CTR ordinance and Federal Way CTR plan, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the commute trip reduction, CTR plan, amending Federal Way Revise Code 810010, 810030, 810060, 810080, 810090, and 810100.
Great. Councilor Doby?
Yes, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Matter passed unanimously. Council reports, we are at the first meeting of the month, and therefore, we'll start at position number one. Counselor Sephardoson?
The Ethiopian soccer tournament started last Sunday, or Saturday, actually, and it goes through Saturday, July 5. And in case there are people wondering, there's going to be a lot of traffic around Federal Way Memorial Field. Oh, you saw it already. Okay. And, but if people are interested in coming to one of the events, I'd suggest July 4 because there's going to be a lot of cultural shows, dances, and music and stuff. So, and a lot of shopping. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, Councilmember McDaniel?
Thank you. I think tonight, I just want to, I went last Friday out and hung out in downtown Federal Way to grab something to eat. And first one, Chick-fil-A's parking, oh my goodness, it was backing up to Pack Highway. It is an interesting way to get into there. I don't know if we can do anything about it, but it was bad enough that I went over to a different location. But the one thing I did notice is there is quite a few individuals that I've never seen before, not residents that I know of, just walking around at 10, 11 o'clock at night. And I have some concerns on what we can do about that now, and especially when we start having, the hotels start to fill up. So, I'm not sure what capabilities are, but I'd be like to be briefed on that in the future, what is possible for that. Thank you.
Very good. You know, we actually went through quite a bit of planning for the traffic layout. And I think, EJ and I, you were involved, and the chief actually, but was it the chief that was involved with regard to the Chick-fil-A? Because on certain locations where they've had grand openings, it did actually back up to, and where in Pack Highway was it backing up?
So, if you, well, Chick-fil-A, the entrance points is so super skinny. There's people coming in from the left side, trying to turn left into it as people are turning out. There's people trying to go straight down the aisle to get to it. And then coming off of Pack Highway into the shopping complex, that stop, that stop sign, turning right to turn into it, that button hook right there, that was where it was backed up to Pack Highway.
Wow. What time was it?
It's closing time, like 9:30 to 9, like 9:30 to 10.
Interesting. Chief and EJ, let's have a conversation, maybe with Rick Perez. I know that we actually, like, when did this, when did this launch again?
After COVID, wasn't it?
Yeah. Okay, I can't remember the day, I mean, that year.
Are you taking when did the store open?
Yeah.
It's been a few years.
Yeah. Remember, we were very involved in that. I remember being in the store before it opened with you and I think EJ and, actually, EJ and chief, and maybe get Rick Perez involved. Let's have a conversation about how they're routing traffic and if we're still on track.
It happens more, quite often around lunchtime.
Ah, interesting.
Throwback up, yeah.
Mayor, I'm very familiar with what's occurring there. And I think what Councilmember McDaniel's describing is probably a very unusual occurrence. I haven't seen backup there like that. And I drive in that area frequently. I would tell you, the entryway into Chick-fil-A can get bottlenecked. And maybe we could talk to the ownership there about enhancing that. What we did at the grand opening is we actually utilized the entire parking lot there and created kind of a serpentine to back up traffic.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen traffic backed up on Pacific Highway because of that business recently, but maybe we can look at it again.
It might have been a one-off. It just sounded like the day I showed up, I was like, this is crazy. So, good for us, good for them, but.
Yeah.
It's a good problem for them to have, I'm sure, but, yeah.
I think it was eight years ago. I think it was 2017. Brian, let's, maybe you can kind of spearhead interdisciplinary conversation. And maybe we can, let's put it on management team agenda to touch base and make sure we're doing it. Thank you, council member, for identifying that issue. Counselor member Honda?
Thank you. I have four things. One, on Sunday, my husband and I walked through the Ethiopian soccer cultural event. And it wasn't fully open, but it was really, really cool. And I am a little disappointed that the City of Federal Way hasn't gone all out to welcome this event to our city. It's a huge event. On, we were told on July 4 and July 5, there could be 30,000 people here in the city for this event. I would like to see banners welcoming people, let the businesses know that this was coming in. And, you know, tourism could be a big thing in Federal Way. We have the King County Aquatic Center. I live close to that. I, we have people parking in our neighborhood for the aquatic center often. As we drove around on Sunday, folks were parked in the neighborhoods around the high school. We drove through there yesterday about 7 o'clock. It was, it was a mess. So, I don't know where all these folks are going to be parking this weekend. I think that's a problem. And I would, I would just love for the city to embrace what we have here in Federal Way, the aquatic center, the things that happen there, the international events that happen there, the national swim and dive events that happen there. I mean, it's a cool thing. If you want your kids to get involved in swimming, we have one of the best pools in the world, but yet, people don't know what's going on there. I just think it's a missed opportunity for us as a City of Federal Way. Also, Norpoint Community Center, which is located just down the road in northeast Dakota, I found out that they have membership rates that are pretty awesome for youth, and it's $0. So, for $0, a youth up to 18 can go use the pool and all of the facilities there. I know we talked about, when we were trying to figure out how to spend the ARPA money, if we could get some free passes for youth and families at our community center. But I would like to maybe go to committee and discuss how we can make the community center more accessible for children. If Norpoint can do it, we can at least talk about how perhaps we could do it or make it just, I looked, I checked the membership rates for our community center, and they're, you know, they're not inexpensive. So, I would like to look into that. One of the, I was looking forward to having our state legislators here because on June 16, I received a letter from the Pediatric Interim Care Center, and that is down in Kent. And it's a care center for babies who have been exposed to drugs. And I've always wanted to go down there and volunteer because you get to rock babies and hold them. And, you know, when they, when they're exposed to drugs in their infants, it's tough, really tough for them. But in Governor Ferguson's partial veto of the state budget, according to the letter, all of PIC's funding was eliminated. And as a result of that, the Department of Children, Youth and Families has canceled the contract. And on, as of July 1, DCYF will no longer place babies at PIC. That means that after 35 years of service, our program of care for drug-exposed infants must pause, at least temporarily. I know that the city has put money into this program for Federal Way babies. I don't know what that means for our babies, if we are still putting money into that. But I would have loved to have asked our state legislators what we can do about that and to get funding for this program because I think it's essential for, for those babies that are born that need this kind of help. I don't know how they're going to be cared for. And they do require care to overcome what happened to them. And then, on July 19, Saturday, Eli and Kelly's Place Annual Celebrate 18 Benefit Dinner is occurring. It's occurring this year at Green River Community College because it used to be done at Auburn Community Center, and it outgrew that, that space. And so, it moved up to Green River Community College. It is to celebrate and honor the young women that are aging out of foster care. And if you've ever been to that event, it is so cool and so awesome. These young women, you know, when they're 18 and they're no longer in foster care, they're kind of on their own. And this organization goes out of their way to provide clothing and help with jobs, help them write a resume, do makeup, give them luggage, give them clothing, give them skills that they need. And it's a, it's just a really awesome thing to see them come to this dinner, and they're celebrated. They're important. They may not, never have had a birthday party. Who knows? I mean, maybe no one's ever celebrated their life. We don't know. But this event is really super special. So, I know last year, they sold out. They had no space for people. So, if you want to go, you can get in touch. I can let you know how to get your tickets. But it is a really cool event. It's July 19 at 6 p.m. Thank you. Oh, and the salmon bake, I know people have talked about it, but July 25, 4 to 8. And I have tickets.
Counselor Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, with 4th of July coming up, I, this last week, I was able to spend a week in the Netherlands. And Netherlands, a beautiful country. We loved it. One of the best vacations ever. But I'm very happy that my ancestors immigrated from the Netherlands and from England and from Scotland and came to America because there's no place like America. And hopefully, on this 4th of July, this Independence Day, we can really appreciate the blessings that we have here. There's other beautiful, wonderful places in the world, but there's no place like America.
Here, here. Counselor Doby?
Yeah, a couple things. I wanted to comment on the CBDG funds because GP Chat and Google, it actually says that 2025 is not affected, but it 2026 will be different. And actually, in here, Federal Way is actually on CPT Chat. It says that many cities, including Bremerton, Washington and Federal Way, Washington issued notices of funding availability. So, my phone must know that I'm sitting in Federal Way.
[laughter]
Anyway, and that would be good for the Pacific Raceway to tell us where people come from. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we got an email, I think everybody did get it, about Sound Transit's coming RFP. And when I looked at that email, it was almost like a Christmas present with all the different opportunities and offers that may be available. And I would just encourage that the city, although we're not a developer, take a serious look at that and how we could participate, or at least understand and maybe have a presentation in the future. The RFPs are due in October, but it'd be something we all should probably be really aware of.
All right.
And then, happy 4th. See everybody on Friday. We should have a big group since CTAC canceled their fireworks. So, hopefully, have extra parking patrols. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Council President?
So, Councilmember McDaniel and I were just at the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Kennewick, which apparently is 85,000 people. And thank heavens, we live here. I can't tell you how appreciative we were that we lived in this beautiful section of the state, beautiful area of the state. But, you know, Mayor, I think one of the things we need to talk about is, next year will be 250 years since we've become the United States. And I think that we probably need to start planning at least six months in advance how we're going to handle it. Be a, quite a big thing for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Agreed, agreed. All right, time to bring the parade back, right, Ken? I think that that is, should definitely be on the top as well as a number of things. So, and actually, what we should probably do is put together a special committee to celebrate the 250th anniversary. So, we'll do that. Thank you. I hope everybody has a safe and happy 4th of July, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.